Guys, you're on the ninety percent.
Oh, yeah, if it was that side for sure.
You did? All right, five o'clock, call meeting to order. First, need to approve the minutes for September 3rd, 2005. September 3rd, 2025. With motion?
I make the motion to approve minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Shut up, Harold. Okay, any adjustments needed to the agenda? Okay. Okay, Harold, you're up.
Oh, that's quick. Yeah, application, you guys.
You're all good with it?
Yeah.
What's that?
Oh, gonna get one of these days. So that's where the asphalt truck went off last year up at Spring Road.
Yeah. So they get assistance repairing that, or?
I believe she got insurance.
Insurance, yeah.
She's still trying to call and get down to the wood truck.
So you do that for them?
I haven't. She called yesterday. I called back. She's hanging up here.
Yeah.
I looked at it, which is the same as we did the last five times that we've looked at it.
All right, so we're good to go. Just need our signature. All right. Okay. Churchill, oh, you got more?
Yeah, I got more. So everybody knows, we're gonna do a little pop light dinner for Phillip at the garage next Wednesday.
Is it a secret, or can I put it?
No, it's wide open. I mean, I talked to Phillip to make sure he's available.
I don't wanna put it in here and then have a reunion?
No, he knows about it. Everybody's welcome. Here, you can put it on the sign up front, or on Facebook, or whatever. Try to throw it out, and dogs, burgers, and dogs, and if you wanna bring something, great.
What time is it?
Four thirty to six thirty. Only other thing I got, our bridge replacement project has come along nicely. We take a couple days off from it to do some grading after the rain we had. Things have got a little moisture in them, so they're green, so... We're gonna start back filling on Monday, and an extra truck or two coming, so should go pretty quickly. That's all, yeah.
Very good, thank you. Alicia?
Okay, so property tax money's coming in, a little slow, I think, but it's coming in. And I have in the folder for you all to sign to pay back TD Bank. The money we borrowed is seventy-five thousand. We have enough to pay that back. The bank scanner, how we do our deposits, hasn't been working. Gary's been in several times. He's up there now, trying to fix it again. So I don't know what's happening with that, so I've had to drive to the bank to get the money in. So hopefully he'll fix it tonight.
Need a new one?
I hope not. We got it. It's not that old.
It's not that old.
It's like three or four years old, I think.
It's because the new computer got switched over, so it's having a little trouble, we think.
Communicating.
Yeah, I think that's what the problem is. Also, I worked on the retirement Beamer's adjustment, and that's been completed. That's in the folder for you to sign. Working on adding Brandon and removing Phillip. And I produced all the Cobra disclosures for Phillip. Quite a process. And I will have more bills to pay for you to sign in over the weekend. If you can stop by by Monday to sign the warrant. And stipends will be paid the first part of October. And I did have a question about what we wanted to do on Larry for the Assistant Health Officer of five hundred dollars. That is you when Dan is not able to be in town. So that is a five hundred dollar stipend. Do you want me to give it to you?
No.
Okay. Do you want me to give it to Dan, or don't?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's what we've done, honestly.
Yeah, yeah.
Tristan did that.
Had to do.
Okay. All right. I guess that's it. I do have a P.O. for the not weed to sign as well, but that's it for now.
We also submitted a reimbursement for like ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah, I had that under grant, so, yeah, I didn't.
They emailed me back and said, oh, thank you for processing it.
Yay. Okay, that's it.
Good. Gary?
I have a liquor license for the Old Scott Barn. There's a wedding going on, October 4th. They need a caterer's permit. So if you give, make a motion, give the okay for that, I can go into the portal and approve that. It's October 4th, the wedding.
Hello? Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I also have received the parade permit, so that's done again for the year. Harold and Brandon got the signs up, so it should be all set for that.
As far as the sheriff?
Sheriff, she, the lady, reached back out to me and she said, yes, she'll take care of having two sheriffs here.
So is that cut enough coverage, or has Dan done it?
Yeah, that's what we did last year, ten thirty to two thirty.
Yeah, good.
Chunk of the day when most of the people here, and they can help close the roads.
Yeah.
And then we have, should hear back about that secondary economic impact grant that the town's gonna get by the end of this month. So that should be all set and processed to come through.
Very good.
And that's all I have.
Good. Dorothy?
Okay, I left you, left you the errors on our mission's form there. It's to combine two parcels that should have been combined before we did our final grant list. So we've combined those, they're buddy properties, so you just need to sign on the back.
So no changes and?
It'll change his tax bill.
His tax bill.
Yeah, so we'll have a revised tax bill and a change of appraisal form. Left you the information there about the new legislation for assessors and listers. And that all takes effect January 1st. So there's a letter that Jill Remick did, head of property valuation and review. And then I did a workshop on it the other day, and she had this, the little flyer there, which I explained it pretty well. So, and Justin and I went to the VALA conference in Stell, which is Vermont Association of Listers and Assessors. We went there on Friday the 12th and had a lot of workshops on different trainings. And this was, this was one of them, and then some of the other computer items. Dan's working on the photos. He's down, he's gonna do, he's gonna finish Scott Highway, and then he's just gonna do Groton Pond. And he's really done, so we're getting down there.
You're gonna get Groton, get it done this?
I think so. I asked him about hunting season, and he said, no, we keep going, still whatever that is. So he's, Justin and I have been working around, because when he, when he has parcels out on the tablet, then we can't make changes. So that's been a challenge, but we're making it work, so. I think that's all I have.
All right. Dan's outside.
I will say a few, a couple things. He was dealing with some wild cows on Great Road, so he'll finish, keep talking to them on the phone. He'll finish dealing with that when he gets back.
Wild cows?
I guess cows that got loose a couple of years ago that never came back, that now would have been living out in the woods that are now eating somebody's food flock. So he's gonna look into what can be done and take care of it. And, you know, he's been busy still, people doing building permits and all that, getting all their stuff finalized before winter.
Okay, firing fast. They must be percolating very long pretty good. They never see them. Guess no, nothing we need to do there. All right, updates on any ongoing grants?
I just have a couple things about the tree grant. That's completed, and we've already received the funds, so that's all done. And Mike and I did the BORIC. And if Mike can help me with the USDA, I'm gonna take you up on that. I'm gonna, I'll email you tomorrow if you can help me push it along.
Yeah.
In an email. I talked to the lady with USDA, but.
Yeah.
Still have it. Will you be near our computer tomorrow? No? Okay, well, I'll still send it to you and you.
I could send the, maybe Monday morning.
Okay, all right.
I'm going away, I mean.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
But yeah, I think that's a good idea.
All right.
Okay. Merck grant update, update too. We had a site visit day last Thursday. We had seven potentially interested contractors on site to do kind of a walkthrough. And it was really, I mean, it's the first time we had multiple eyes on the project, and some things got surfaced as a result. I'll zip through some of this stuff, and if you see something at the front end, you can stop me. They kind of flagged some different issues or different requests that they were looking for in terms of bid forms and that type of thing. I'll get onto sort of addressing those in, when I talk about next steps and things like that. Some of these things are pretty straightforward. Fed call with CX today to kind of go, CX Associates, who are sort of engineering consultants, kind of go through it with all the feedback that kind of surfaced. And going to the community building, I think we should expect a major electrical upgrade, which would be, according to NVDA, covered under the grant. And I think the way we're thinking about it right now is, let's keep these three RFPs out there. Let's get the specs in that come in from them and understand the electrical loads that what they're proposing will require. And then create a separate RFP for electrical utility upgrade, panel upgrade, which I think makes the most sense. We'll build something to spec that will meet the future requirements of whatever bid we end up proposing. It does put a little bit of a sort of extra step in the middle, but I think it's, it makes it the most sense, even with where we're at. The two boilers currently specced won't fit into the existing space with some of the feedback. That is a function of CX kind of overspecing what the new equipment would be and other people's interpretation of what that would be. So it really comes down to the equivalence, wood pellet boiler was just gonna be so big that it just wasn't gonna fit in the space, and more vertically versus horizontally. CX kind of looked at it and they kind of brought it back into still reasonable specs. And the ability to kind of also have smaller systems in there, which should save us some money in terms of what gets proposed and pitched. And a couple of the contractors mentioned that as well, that it's gone a little lower in the numbers by not overengineering the capacity of what was gonna go in there. The two existing boilers have eight-inch flues, I guess. We currently only have a twelve-inch chimney. Doesn't sound like we're currently spec on the chimney. And then there was a question as to what goes in there. Are we gonna meet code for things? And then I had another pellet guy in yesterday, and he kind of looked at it, and he said, oh, the equipment I would propose is gonna work with this chimney. So we're gonna make sure we add some language to the RFP to communication with the contractors that we're already entitled with, to let them know what they're proposing also requires chimney work to flag that and to separate that as a separate item. That doesn't appear to be as big an issue as it was on Thursday, because on Thursday it was pretty much, hey, your chimney doesn't work. Doesn't work right now, and it won't work in the future in terms of size. The fan in the can that's in there right now, basically bringing air in for combustion currently isn't big enough. That needs to be replaced.
We're aware of the fan in the can. I've been talking about it for quite three years.
Oh, okay.
And our current plumber has recommended this, and we just never get it done and find an electrician that has time to do it. It's just been off.
Yeah, so I think, I think there is, I think, basically CX says that the new system is direct vent. Is not direct vent to include costs associated with a new fan in the can sort of thing. But if it is direct vent, I think the fan is required for it, so we'll solve that. The side door, thanks Lisa for that receipt. I called Oaks Brothers, doors fiberglass and insulated. I ran the numbers by CX. I said it's comparable. I think all Matt knows to do is get better contact at the threshold, so there's no leaking air. So if we can just send them that material out of the spec and just say, kind of finish the job to the spec, then we better get compliant with what the state.
Like just putting like a rubber seal or something?
It's like weather stripping, stripping at the bottom to seal it up, yeah. So that's good news. Fire station, we went to the state sort of based on talking about water demand and usage there. Got an amendment for an electric on-demand water heater, and then contractors are basically like, it turned, it surfaced at the fire station that beyond washing hands, there's also a hose that gets used to wash down fire trucks and equipment. When they come back, well, that wasn't part of the original calculation. And between the pressure involved with that and any type of hard water that electrodominates, not gonna work. So we're gonna have to go back to CX or to BGS, and it looks like right now the best potential path would be some type of hybrid heat pump hot wire heater, if we want BGS to cover, the state to cover. The other thing to do would be keep the existing propane kind of in there. And then there was also some pushback about an overspec of the hybrid electric and propane heat pump in the fire station, and CX kind of agreed it was overspec, so they lowered some of those numbers as well. So kind of moving forward, we're kind of in the middle of things. And we've got, I think, some potentially interested parties kind of in the mix. My thoughts, have to talk into handful of different people. Are that we moved the proposal deadline out a week? Right now it's September 29th. That was really geared towards an October 1st select board meeting. There is no October 1st select board meeting. So move it out a week to October 6th. And then move the select board decision date out to the, assuming we have one, on October 22nd. And the reason to have that two-week gap is, I was on a call with efficiency Vermont. They will put their engineers on whatever proposals gets submitted and come back and say, hey, this is great, or this isn't gonna work. And CX will be the same. We can't do that a day and a half, two days. So I think having that window will allow more eyes on things and better advice, better decisions. The other thing, I just come back just from feedback from the contractors, is consider changing the project completion window to June or July of 2026. I just pulled a May 15th number out, just to put a state in the ground. And some of them are like, it's kind of tight to switch over heating systems kind of at that time of year. So I think adding the end of June or the end of July would be a good change. And then kind of let the contractors know there'll be an RFP for electrical panel upgrade that will be coming in later. And then, so the thought really is to update the existing RFPs as-is, not pull them and reissue them. Just basically go and strike through some of the old numbers and then spell out that stuff in the RFPs. Go to our eight contractors and make them aware of what's changed. Add a Q and A section, just based on what's popped up, like oil consumption data at least the last couple, last two years. So now I've got five years, people are asking for five years of oil data consumption. The historic building docks that we have, and then there's some other questions. And so add a Q and A section. And then I've been trying to get a great example bid form. Going to the NVDA towns, they have Merck grants, nobody has one, they've shared. NVDA sent me one two days ago. It's a bit generic. I was hoping for kind of an apple-to-apple type thing I could use. But I think the idea would be to create some type of bid form, and I think that benefits the contractors in terms of more clarity around costs, and I think it benefits us because it will be more of an apple-to-apple comparison. And will also, I think, protect us in case costs are going up in certain areas, if we wanna drop something as well. So looking to do that. And then probably re-promote it and just keep it out to those people that have stuck their hands up so far. And then update the RFP, Groton BT site and the state site, and then send it out through Front Porch Forum and Groton Listor. Who we delegate here is somebody who's just laying in the weeds, who hasn't stuck their hand up and asked a question or come to our site visit day. So we may get somebody who submits something Monday.
What did they, what did they say about being able to feed the pellets, and was that gonna be a problem at all?
It didn't appear to be a problem. So, I mean, I think the pellet silo is considered, the ideal spot seems to be under that corner of the building, where there's a lot of space and there's a new pavement, and it's easy to come in. I am gonna call one of the guys just to get an understanding of frequency in terms of truck deliveries and stuff like that. Because that also dictates a little bit of a size, and it came up in CX call just to try to understand some of that stuff. But, yeah, I think we've got two, that I'm aware of, we've got two good wood pellet vendors in there. Both are very knowledgeable. We haven't got to the stage to check in references, but they are kind of, they don't foresee an issue, so, yeah. So that's where we're at on that. I guess, I don't know, I've kind of, I have a RFP that has most of the strike-throughs and all that on stuff. It doesn't have the Q and A and that sort of stuff in there. It doesn't have a link to a bid form yet. That needs to be created. My thoughts are, I could go up to the eight people this evening and basically say, hey, just to let you know, we're gonna move the date out, assuming I've got, go ahead and move the date out. And give them that tonight, so they're not feeling like they need to jam it out, you know, trigger pulls it together out Thursday, Friday. And then swing back, hopefully tomorrow, and get them the updated stuff, so they can run things, but... So I don't know how the process works. I don't know if you're approval for the tweaked RFP or not. I mean, I've got copies of that. There's not a lot in there, except for some of the lower numbers and the change rates.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes in the RFPs.
I second that.
I'd like to comment on it. October 6th is the Monday.
Yeah.
Why not have a bid opening be the Wednesday? We have to open them, right? And then go to CX, right? We're not gonna review them. We're just gonna open them.
So, yeah, so it's October 6th. Well, what, what we didn't take into account the first time was the ability for CX to review the bids and the ability for efficiency Vermont to review the bids. You can open them two days later. We won't have, they're not gonna be able to turn that quickly, turn reviews. They're not gonna be able to come back the next day and say.
So he's saying, you guys open it on the 8th, but then you have to the next meeting to approve one because you're gonna send them to CX to be looked at.
Yeah, no, I get that, but why, why is the proposal deadline the 6th?
And not the 8th?
Yeah, why not make it the 8th?
I can, we can move the proposal deadline whenever we want. I wouldn't mind two weeks to give these organizations a chance to look at things and pass judgment.
No, first, that I completely agree with. We have no clue about this stuff. But the, the proposal deadline at the top line, I'm assuming this is when the bids are due, when the contractor comes in and says.
The general date was September 29th. The updated date I put was October 6th, and I said, or later, so.
I'm gonna make a motion that it's October 8th, to give them until Wednesday.
So they'll submit on Wednesday?
Yeah, and they'll still have until the next meeting to review it.
Hey, two extra days is great. It still gives CX and efficiency two weeks.
They're just gonna stay here.
Yeah, they're gonna sit here for two days until we open them. Because we have to formally open them, right, before they go to CX and probably make a motion that we have someone review them. Because it's outside of the norm, how we do things. So I would give them to the 8th. That, that's not my only addition to the motion. I agree with the motion, but I would give them to the 8th for the deadline, for the.
I can be who works great for everybody.
Yeah, okay. Good.
I should have thought of it.
I was like, that's two, two days when you're preparing bids and RFP. I used to prepare bids when I was a product manager. That two days is important.
It's meaningful.
Yeah.
I mean, we did, we, yeah, so I think, I'll do that, so change it to October 4th.
So what has happened to the propane backup heater?
Where, which building are you in?
Right here.
Propane backup.
Thought we had.
Yeah, that's still part of the, that's part of the, it's, there's two options we've got from BGS. One was two wood pellet boilers, or one wood pellet boiler and one low-mass propane boiler.
So that's in the specs, and the people have talked about it and figured it out?
Yeah, and we're, and we're verbally saying we'd like to see both options, so.
Okay. Nobody saw an issue with that, though, fitting in here?
No, and that propane is smaller, so it's a, it's a, having, the second option is a better definite. Yeah, and the two wooden pellet ones, I think the way it was originally overspec would have had challenges, unless we move walls or whatever, but, no, the option two is a, is an easier fit in that space.
All right, so I make a motion to move the proposal deadline from October 6th, 4:00 p.m., till, to October 8th at 4:00 p.m.
And accept the changes in the RFPs.
And, and what Tom says.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I do have one question, Mike. What about the doors for the?
Which doors? The garage?
For the garage.
I don't know whether, I mean, Dennis is out this week. Um, I don't know whether, I mean, Dennis is out this week, and he was kind of looking after that, so I don't know.
They can get it, you don't know before winter?
Oh, I think so.
You think so?
Yeah. It's probably, I'm guessing it's in a lineup of jobs that finish, yeah. I mean, all the, we, do we have, all the paperwork's been executed, right, Lisa?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we were. I thought we had a date for it to install.
I, and we very well could, I don't know what.
Very good.
I've got a couple.
Yep.
Dates, we did execute that grant agreement with USDA for the behind Upper Valley Grove stretch. Now the question is, what do we do next? It's fifty thou, or thirty nine thousand dollars plus twelve or eleven out of the town.
Yep.
Work to be done by December thirty first. And to remove the debris out of the river, then there's like a technical side of it, which, do we buy for permits or did?
I'm sure, permits to put equipment in there.
Right.
They had a whole, they had a whole, if you look on that, I guess I didn't bring it with me.
I didn't print, I didn't bring my printed copy with me.
It says a little timeline and we're already behind.
Oh, yeah, we're way behind already. I was gonna, we're probably amending the agreement, I should've asked them for an extended date till July.
I think it's supposed to be out of the river by October first.
Yeah, I, I think we're, yeah.
I'm surprised they did it this late, knowing that.
Well, it, it's like, it, I should've asked for like a July first date for the, and or June thirty.
I can't imagine it's gonna be able to happen in this fiscal year.
Well, in our town, just, I'm thinking for their federal fiscal year is June.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I might just.
Too bad, cause the river's nice and, nice and.
Right, right. I know.
I mean, what are your thoughts, Harold? Do you think you, that someone would, I mean, if we're gonna be out by October first, it's definitely not happening.
Yeah, I didn't know that, but yeah, that's not happening for sure.
And I'm like, Bridge Friday, yeah, up there, I'm supposed to be up, done in the river by October first, so.
All right, so I guess we need to talk to the grant people about amending the grant, just say this isn't happening. See what they say.
I mean, you can call here and board here, or, he does permits.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think he's got a stickler on it.
They're on my floor, or.
You can check because those dates still listed through, September, October, November for.
I know, it said November to do the work, did you say that project start?
Right.
Yeah, I'll check.
Water level that went ascend, yeah.
Right, there is water.
We're not in the water.
Right, sure.
Right. Water's, check one over there.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna look into that further, but that was the one, the one grant. For VORC, as Lisa said, we did our last reimbursement, there's like thirty four hundred dollars remaining, or, we have one contract for thirty three hundred dollars. I'm gonna change that to thirty three to thirty five. Let's go thirty four hundred. We have one contract for thirty three hundred for the kiosk design, and then the, we paid for the entire gates with the grant. And then what, the only, they have two lines that are gonna put us over, one's for the, so the lady that designs the sign, and then they print it on something, that's the next charge, and that's like, I think it was four, four fifty, so we'll go over like two or three hundred dollars over the VORC grant. Then there's a line that I had in my spreadsheet for what I put money aside for that just said Crossmont Trail signs. I have to check with Crossmont Trail and just see where we're at, if they've spent three thousand dollars, and if they're still gonna charge us three thousand dollars, or what's gonna happen with that. So we may end up, I think I thought it was gonna go over about thirty five hundred with the gates, and if that Crossmont Trail stays in, it would be the case. Not that it would go over, but it would, you know, we would, we would be spending town funds on top of the grant.
So the goal is really to get this done in twenty twenty five, right?
It's done, yeah, we're so close.
Like, and receive the money too?
Yeah.
In twenty twenty five, like, hopefully. It only takes like two weeks.
Yeah, they're pretty quick.
Yeah, so we really need to finish it.
Well, we have the final design of the kiosk is being reviewed now, I think, or a couple back and forths. And then the only, the only one really outstanding thing I have for the gates is the lock, and touching base with the fire department, the type of lock that goes there. And do we lock them this year?
Yeah, I think we lock them as soon as we can. I do, I did have Dale taken, stopped in to see, cause the gates had been closed.
Yeah.
And it worked good for a couple days, and then someone figured out they weren't locked. So, so I really think the sooner, I think the whole hunting thing and all that, we need to.
Figure out.
Think about that, and leaving it open for, you know, driving down there hunting, I don't, that section, they can drive on this one here.
Yeah.
You know.
No, they can't.
Okay, but I just think.
It's gonna be a gate of, yeah.
I just think that, and I'm, there's probably an order, ordered somewhere that says we can't lock them, but I don't know, I don't think, I just think.
I heard feedback that there is.
I just think we need to figure out with Aaron, Fire Department, what kind of a lock you're gonna have, Harold's got, and who, who needs to know the combo? I mean, what, what have you used in the past, a key or a combination flaw?
I mean, it's. It's gonna be, I mean, with the, the, the way we installed the gates were so that a fire truck would pull right up to the gate without having to be like, you know, a weird position, so they're, we set them up so they're not on a turn, so the fire truck would pull right up, the lights will be shining on it, and they're gonna be able to, so, so it's like, you know, pretty, pretty straightforward. Because where they were, where we were gonna put them, you know, they were on bays, and it was like, okay, this isn't gonna work well for, for the trucks, but.
Like, I guess someone's gotta reach out to Aaron, and how many people need to know how to be able to unlock them?
One of the gates, the, it has like a, a thing like this, and there's no hole in it for lock, and it's that thick metal. I, I will not be able to make a hole in it, someone, someone's gonna have to, it's the gate on this side. I don't, I have to, I'd have to look at the one on the other side and see if it has it, but it needs a, a hole. It's like a manufacturing defect, like they forgot to drill a hole.
I, I'll look at that, I can make sure we got holes in it.
Yeah, I think they came up good, we have real data head signs are here, should be here tomorrow or the next.
I've had two people tell me that it's nice when they've been closed, when they're down there walking.
Hmm, yeah.
It's more traffic than I ever, God, was.
Definitely. I don't know if you want to mention Greg Wester and what he's been up to this week too.
Yeah, then, then the Crossmont Trails and building the, the walkarounds, the ridearounds of the gates.
Sounds awesome, yeah.
And they're almost, maybe done with the cut across from Powder Spring to Little Italy, where the, where Snowville Trail usually goes.
Yeah.
The last thing they're doing is putting signs up, and then this weekend is the Crossmont Trails, Fall Foliage Drive through Groton. They start at the softball field or baseball field in Rygate, and they're going all the way out to Boulder Beach Road, I believe, and back.
Four Corners.
Four Corners.
Yeah, Lane Borough.
Okay. I was wrong. We're gonna be doing our trail count this weekend, we have to, for the grant, we have to do a before and after trail count. So this weekend will be, there's four places we do trail count, so there'll be two cameras over on this end for the, for the, for the week, and then we'll move them, Fall Foliage weekend, they'll be on state cars out there. Yeah, that's all I have for that. So, yeah, the locks thing has been on my list, and I just haven't called Aaron, so. Though, I didn't give a planning commission update, but we, we have an update to provide.
What?
We have a vacancy, Steve Hart resigned from the, from the board, so we have a, we're a seven person commission, I'm an ex officio non-voting member, I assume we'll be stepping down as well, probably gonna write the, the annual summary for the report and then move along from that, cause it's just doing too much stuff. But we don't have to fill a vacancy for me, cause I moved from being a voting member to a non-voter, so, whole thing. But we do have a vacancy there, we ask just planning commissioners, and so asking anyone, if anyone knows anyone, we're doing a, a survey, that's gonna start at Fall Foliage Day, and NVDA and, uh, planning commissioners will be at, in front of the library, for, sort of, trying to get people to do a survey for the new town plan. So this is like, well, what do you think Groton should do for the next ten years, or what's, you know, it sort of gets a gauge on what people are thinking, and we picked up several areas that we thought were of greater concern than others, so we're asking some focus questions there. So that, and that's, that's gonna be open for like two months. So, um, one of the things we'll have is probably like something up in the upstairs, so people can do the survey, and maybe in the tax office, you know, so someone comes in, there's like a, here to take our survey for the town plan type thing. And then the other thing that the NVDA is doing, so NVDA is preparing our new town plan, they wanna do focus interviews with town leaders, so it's department heads, select, selectmen, and basically anyone who's interested, but we've got different, different members from different, all over the community, it's business owners, I'm gonna talk to you about Groton Tire and Auto, and see if they're interested too. But we have, we're putting together a list, so if you can think of anyone, we've got all the heavy, like, the Lake Association, you know, Rural Edge and the library, all the departments here, Bill, Sonnies, Chuck, if you think of anyone who's interested, Jody, I think we're gonna get him too. Let me know, I'm still compiling those for the next couple days.
The speed study was done. From the looks of the data, if I'm reading it correctly, it was done over three days.
It's a confusing.
Day one, ninety two point four percent of the people were over the speed limit. Day two, ninety one and a half percent. Day three, ninety point six percent. And the average speeds were thirty eight miles per hour for two days and thirty seven miles per hour for the third day. So we, I approved as far as this part of the process to be able to put those signs up, but there's still more work to be done, but now at least that I've got that, so I can move forward with the rest of them.
Good, so it's not gonna happen this year?
Probably not.
But we need to figure out how to buy some new signs too.
Good.
All right, I wanted to talk about, Matt Nun is getting prices, the concern about the park, fixing the benches, you know, they're facing the bushes, they're in terrible condition. So he's getting prices for three different types of material. I asked him to take a look at the fence by the lower part, by the river, and he thinks if he could cut some brush, pull the fence back up, straighten it out, and it has wire behind it so balls, small child wouldn't fall through, he thinks they could, he could really get them so they'd be okay, you know, and we wouldn't have to get into a new fence right away. He thinks he could stain them, get them straight, and, and work on it, so he's working on that, and painting the gazebo floor and work on the steps, he said that's minimal, he could do that at any point. So he's working on getting those prices for us. And Fall Foliage Day, I just wanted to say a big thank you, I think it's Larry, you put the cornstalks up?
The grandkids and my daughter.
That's lovely, they look great, thank you so much. And I had an update from Erin Darling, who is doing the, you know, position of vendors, and I think she has five vendors set up for sure, and people have been calling, so I think there'll be more, but then the classes, and then the survey tables, she said there's other things. So, you know, she's working on it, and, you know, hopefully it will be, grow each year, so. So that's it, thank you.
I did talk with Harold about that, we do wanna close this road off over here that day.
Mill Street?
Mill Street. Because when they come down with their floats and stuff and line up, last couple years has been cars scooching down through there.
Okay.
So, I mean, just in the mo, you know, before the parade, couple, three hours before that.
So what would you do, get sawhorses or something?
I think just some cones and some flagging tape up.
Put a roadblock sign up on each side.
I know, but that's not gonna stop people.
No, but cones, I mean, especially up here, I mean, floats it down there, they're not gonna come through, but if you're coming from this side, you can't see them.
Yeah.
You're gonna try to.
Turn, turn it out.
So where, if we close the road up further, if we close 302?
Well, we're not gonna close, it's gotta be before 302, because they, they start lining up two or three hours before, and it's fine for a while, but then when it gets crowded, you get all the little kids, and, and then the road's closed here, people are scooching down through there. I think if we just shut it down three hours before.
Can you, um?
And, and 302 will still be open, you'll be able to go up Powder Spring Road, it's just, it, it's just those people that don't wanna head over and turn left or right onto 302. So it's, it doesn't have to, like, four or five cones, I mean, just deter most people.
I was gonna say park your dump truck at the end of it. The Town and Groton Truck?
No, but then we gotta move them when the parade starts.
I never guess to see a Town, Town unit or something.
Well, then Harold will have to clean it up, wash it, Paul's.
I know, I made his name with that one, for sure.
Anyways, it's all good stuff, hopefully we have a good day for it. It's good to get the younger generation starting to get involved. All right?
I've got one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
I forgot to mention it, I'm gonna be away starting October fourteenth, and just wondering, if it's possible to get video conference access or remote access to select board meetings, so we can divert stuff moving.
Yeah, I mean, you know how to do it, right?
Just make a request? Two weeks, two days in advance, or?
Yeah, we have to.
Okay, I have some queries.
I was just, I was just gonna tell Harold that he can probably teach you.
That's out of my league, Mike, I don't know how that would work, oh.
I, I can set up a bigger.
You can?
Yeah.
Okay.
What bigger though?
So just notify you a couple days ahead of time?
Yeah. Awesome.
Do you have Zoom or?
Um, I have Zoom, I also, I use my state computer, you know, it's on a boss, and I have Teams, so we could use that here.
I've got Zoom as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, great.
Let me go to work.
All right. That's it, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good.